Happy spring, Templeton. Welcome to Question Time where we go over questions for our annual town meeting, the articles that are on the warrant, and also talk about the town election. I'm Steve Castle from Templeton Community TV, and with me is Carter Terranzini, the Templeton Town Administrator. Not only is it spring, but it's also budget season, town meeting season, town election season.
It's a long season from February to the middle of May for many of us, yes.
So can you tell, let's start with the election, the town election that is on Monday, May 7th, from 11:00 to 7:00 p.m.
And that's at the Narragansett Regional Middle School. It's from, I think you said 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There is a contested race for selectmen on the ballot. There are a couple of open positions, which I spoke about at the Select Board meeting last night, and there are two ballot questions. One is to determine whether or not people will approve of some added funding for public safety, primarily our provision of ambulance service, and the second has to do with the debt exclusion for the police station, and perhaps we can get into them a little bit more as we go through the warrant.
Now, I think a lot of people get confused with it. You have to pass these budget override questions both at the town election and the town meeting, correct?
Right.
So if people don't show up for the election and vote for it...
Yes, the town meeting makes the appropriation, whether it's the debt or it's the general operating budget. But because the costs of those appropriations would cause us to be over our debt levy limit, our tax levy limit, we need permission to add a little bit of money to those bases, and that has to be done at the ballot box.
So, vote on May 7th? Either way you vote, it's your vote, and then we'll follow up with that at town meeting. So let's talk about the warrant articles at town meeting, Carter.
And that's May 19th, starting at 9:00 a.m. up at the Narragansett School Complex. So we have, our first article was what we call kind of the fiscal '18 cleanup, if you will. We're asking for about $85,000 that we're funding out of free cash. These are one-time expenses, if you will, and we believe they're suitable use of free cash. There's the perennial snow and ice deficit. Then we had several cases of litigation this year. We had litigation with Day Mills Zoning Board of Appeals, we had another zoning board of appeals case, and so the town council budget looks like it's going to be overrun. And then, we need to change the template for sending out the tax bills. Right now, we send tax bills out three times a year. You get one bill with two coupons, then you get a bill with one coupon, a bill with one coupon, and in order to stay within our normal budget, we want to send out just two bills a year, two coupons on each bill, and we have to pay the billing company to redesign the billing templates for that. So that's Article 1.
So, and these are supplemental appropriations, and they're pretty normal for town meeting.
They're supplemental appropriations, they're fairly normal, and it's what many towns have a special town meeting before or within the annual town meeting to do. So that's question 1.
And Article 2 is a consent agenda, and these are non-controversial actions?
Well, we hope they're relatively non-controversial. We bulk a couple different items together, so we don't take each one as a standalone article, but it's acceptance of the town report. If a committee didn't submit a written report, they have an opportunity to make a short verbal report. And then with the change in the statute last year, we now have to, we still set the spending limits on revolving funds annually, but now we can simply set the limit, we don't have to re-adopt every single one individually. So with the fall town meeting that adopted the warrant on that, we set those spending limits. So that one's fairly brief and hopefully non-controversial.
I see Article 3 is to amend the bylaws for departmental revolving funds, and I'll let you explain.
Yeah, under the old statute, annually, you created or adopted a revolving fund. You had to say who it was going to be for, and what they could spend it on, and what income went into it, and what the maximum was. So last fall, with the change in state statute, we created a bylaw that did all that for a number of things. But we're looking this year to add an account for what we call community services, that is for the rec department, the cultural commission, the council on aging, and that way, if the rec department, for instance, let's say, gets a request for, oh, I don't know, but rugby, I think was one example, they don't have to wait till the next year to get an appropriation within the budget to do it, they can simply say to the rugby league, okay, here's what the registration fees are going to be, they're going to get deposited into this revolving fund, and then we'll pay those expenses out of there. So it provides an avenue for flexibility and much faster response time from these various departments, and it keeps things out of the operating budget.
I see. So Article 4 is a long one, and it amends the bylaws regarding the advisory committee.
Well, right now, and there was some talk of this at the fall town meeting, and then it was pulled back by the Select Board, right now, the advisory committee, when there are vacancies mid-year, the committee itself appoints them. There are many believe that the moderator should make all of the appointments, that is the typical norm across the state. There is a conflict between some of the responsibilities that the advisory committee once had to actually prepare the budget, and when the town changed to have the town administrator responsible for preparing the budget. Well, they adopted that responsibility for the town administrator, but didn't really clean up the responsibility of the advisory committee. So those two things have been in conflict with each other. The other two things that we're trying to clean up here is that the advisory committee right now has some limitations on what it can comment on. We're looking to expand it so they can comment on any article that is on the warrant, including the citizen petition. We want the community to have the benefit of their advice and knowledge. And finally, right now, there are some limits as to when the selectmen have to give them everything, and when they have to make their report available. We're looking to tie when the selectmen have to give them everything to be 30 days before a meeting, as opposed to a fixed date, and we'll talk about that in a moment. And then, secondly, we'd like to have the advisory committee report available to the community sooner than two days before the annual meeting, the current standard. So this will give the moderator consistent appointment authority, clean up the conflict between the two bylaws with respect to who does the warrant, expand the authority of the advisory committee to comment on warrant articles, create some flexibility as to when the selectmen have to give their information to the advisory committee that's tied to when the town meeting is actually going to happen, and make the advisory committee reports available to the community with some added time. So we think it merits consideration.
Now, I stay out of controversial subjects being on Templeton Community TV, but I understand there's been talk the past couple of years of whether the advisory committee should only advise on town meeting warrant articles, or be kind of a fiscal watchdog like a financial committee, and I believe there's language in this that addresses that.
It does, and I think that the advisory committee should comment on all the matters that are on the warrant, because even what appear to be non-budgetary can have fiscal impacts down the line, can impact how we're viewed by the credit markets. So I'm, and I also happen to believe that if we know what we're doing, and we're talking about things, and we're being pushed and tested to make sure that our material's vetted, that that's in the best interest of the public at large. So I like an expansive role for the advisory committee, I think it's best for the community.
Okay, let's move on to Article 5, and this simply amends bylaws for the citing of Class 2 auto licenses.
Well, you had a bylaw that said that the Class 2 auto licenses had to be spread across your four precincts. You no longer have four precincts, you have three voting precincts. And so we're asking that we change it, so that instead of the licenses being across four precincts, they be across the town's several precincts. That way, if you have two, if you have five, if you have four, it's an evolving and living document that can adapt with any change in the number of voting precincts that you have.
And Article 6 addresses bylaws for the Veterans Advisory Board. What proposed changes are in place?
Well, a couple of years ago, you created a veterans oversight committee, and the Attorney General kicked it back saying, geez, folks, the statute says this, you said this, they're not in compliance. The statute said this, your bylaw says this, they're not in compliance. So what we did was we sat down, we took the statute, we took the Attorney General's letter, and we redrafted the bylaw, basically from the ground up, assuming the community would still like to have a veterans advisory board, but addressing all of the questions that the Attorney General's office had.
I see. And Article 7, moving right along, regards licenses and permits.
This is the one where if you get a business license, or you want a building permit, even if you're an individual, or you need a sewer connection, or you need any sort of permit or license from the community, if you are not current on your taxes, which can mean simply having a payment agreement, it doesn't mean, everybody runs into trouble from, well, many of us have or will run into trouble from time to time with our finances, we get hit with a personal illness, something just goes wrong in life. And the old statute was changed under the Municipal Modernization Act. We're trying to bring this into compliance with the Municipal Modernization Act of 2016.
Does it now, if it talks about additional penalties for permits, or is that...
There's no additional penalties. It basically is a timing issue. Previously, the treasure collector was anticipated that it would only produce the list once a year, now it can be produced once a month, or more periodically, and it simply keeps things more current.
What's this, I see something about bicycle permits?
Oh, this was quoted direct from state statute. We do not have bicycle permits in this community, we do not intend to propose bicycle permits. I can remember, you know, you'd go to the police station on a Saturday, and they would look for the serial number on your bike, and give you this little tag.
Really?
Yes, give you this little tag. We're certainly not proposing anything like that, we're simply mimicking the state statute.
I always thought bicycles, you could just ride for free.
There are many communities where you have to register the bicycle.
I did not know that.
And actually, the police will tell you about how this means it's, can be tracked in theft, and you have a reporting mechanism for insurance, they'll tell you all kinds of good reasons that I never bought into as an 11-year-old or a, well, the age I am now.
Well, I can tell you from experience that just biking up Templeton's hills is enough to tax you, so.
It can be, yes.
So Article 8 talks about the timing of the annual town election and the meeting. I know a lot of discussion has been done with this, we're trying to coordinate with Phillipsden as well on this for some reasons, and I'll let you apply.
This one is a challenge, there are some communities that have done this. You can have your annual election and your annual town meeting over March, April, May, and June under statute. The Narragansett Regional School District requires that you have your election on a Monday, that's all it says, doesn't even say which month. This one's been pushed by Selectmen Morrison, I think, with some good reasoning behind it. As many towns often do, as this town does this year, there's some ballot questions. And we have come to believe that if the town meeting happens before the election, that that provides an opportunity for the selectmen, the boards, the commissions, the department heads, to explain what those ballot questions are about, to get the information out there, and then those 250, or plus or minus, folks that attend the town meeting help filter that information out as well. Most of the folks, including those at the school district, seem to have accepted the merit of this. There will be a challenge, and that Phillipsden does not seem as keen as we are on moving it, but someone does need to move, we're 85% of the district, 84%, we believe this is an important thing, and will enhance the debate and the communication with the community. And if we lose elections, we lose elections, but I would think that anything and everything we can do, this show, flyers, the web postings, moving the town meeting so there's more debate, anything we can do to enhance the communications and debate would be in the best interest of the community.
And I know there was also a concern about having the town election prior to the town meeting, if new people are elected, and then one of their first things, baptism of fire, is to go up there and be there at town meeting.
It is, it's baptism by fire, it's baptism by fire for the town moderator. If you get a new town moderator elected at the election, he has very short time, or she has very short time, to run their first meeting. So there's a lot of good reasons to do this, but the driving one really is that level of communication that it can create between the boards, commissions, and department heads, and the community over ballot questions that are coming up.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. I think a lot of people get confused with town meeting and town election, and again, don't realize...
Why one is done here, why something's done over there, how come they're done in both places, as with the override question, yes.
And don't realize the ballot questions have to be decided at the election as well.
That's right.
So Article 9 talks about the acquisition of lands from the Walter Fernal Corporation, which is the Templeton Development Center, high up on the hill.
This is a redo of the warrant article of last fall. I'm hopeful that the CPC will have some community information sessions between now and the town meeting, and I will leave the explanation of the merits on this warrant article to them. I don't have an intimate grasp of what those might be, quite frankly.
And the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee operates with grant money from the Community Preservation Act, which we pay into, correct?
That's right. So there's a surcharge on the tax bill, if you have a house that's above $100,000, whatever is above $100,000 pays a little bit extra for the CPC, and thank you, because I fell into the trap, I always scold people about the Community Preservation Committee, and then they get a matching grant from the state. And so, yes, that's how that would be funded.
And there are a few articles, I think, on the warrant.
There's two, yes, two, now that I recall.
And Article 10 talks about the acceptance of Lafayette Road as a public way, what's going on there?
Well, Lafayette Road was a new subdivision road constructed according to the plan, submitted to the planning board, which were reviewed and approved. They had engineering inspection reports throughout the course of this, and so it's ready to be accepted by the town, which would mean we have the responsibility going forward to sweep it in the spring, to patch potholes, reconstruct it, and the like. The developer does prepare a title package and a survey plan, that's now under review by town council to make sure that if there's any last-minute hitches, that those get worked out. But it is subject to a town meeting vote as to whether or not to make this part of the town's public highway system.
I see. Article 11 is the Templeton Scholarship Fund.
That's an annual that you've seen, the town appropriates about $4,000, which the scholarship committee gives out to worthy college attendees from here in Templeton.
I think that's a worthwhile cause. And property valuation account, Article 12.
This is also an annual item. We have to, every five years now, it used to be three, do a complete and total revaluation of all the properties in town. In the interim years, we do what's called a statistical update, that is, we do some spot inspections, and we run an algorithm that brings everything current to that year based upon market trends in those spot inspections. Also, over the course of a 10-year period, we are supposed to physically inspect the interior and the exterior of every property, it's called a measure and list. And, you know, not that anybody would do it, but if someone were to, let's say, redone, turn the attic into a new bedroom, or perhaps renovated their bathroom, and with Home Depot and Lowe's and all these things, or added a deck without a permit, and we didn't know about it. This is where we periodically check to make sure that our records are correct, and that we've reflected measure, what is there, and list, what are the types of building materials that are used throughout the home.
Because all those things can affect your evaluation.
And instead of having, you know, in the fifth year appropriating $150,000, or whatever it is, annually, the town appropriates a sum of money towards these. This is up a little bit, normally it's about $20,000, but we are going to have to move that up over the next few years, because prices for this work unfortunately, like everything else, are increasing.
Article 13 is the funding of the Community Preservation Account.
Yep, this is where the town says, when you get these monies in, we want you to deposit them in certain proportions for certain dollar amounts into these various accounts.
And Article 14 is the expending of Community Preservation Reserves.
That's right, and yes, we talk about, we get a grant from the state, but that grant of the extra money, the match towards the surcharge for the Community Preservation Committee, has to be appropriated out by town meeting. So this year, they have four projects, Narragansett Historical Society Building, to complete some architectural access, remove some barriers so people can get into the building more easily, some trails development, reuse of the Baldwinville Elementary School, is there a prospect for recreation, particularly given the land and the rail trail that could exist behind it, affordable housing, and I'm afraid, Steve, you've got the actual warrant there, what's the third one? I can't, I can't remember that one.
Narragansett Historic, well, library?
Oh, yes, some added work at the library to be matched with some private funds as well. And those are all in one warrant article, instead of having four, certainly if anybody has a question, just give a shout out, and we'll get you, we'll get you the answer there. That's Mr. Henshaw's committee, and they're very, they work very hard throughout the course of the year to vet projects.
Article 15 is the Cable Department Operating Budget, and this is where I'll clam up and let you take over.
Cable Department is an enterprise fund, and created last year, and your budget has to be appropriated by town meeting, just like anybody else's.
Thank you. And Article 16 is the Sewer Department Operating Budget and Other Enterprise Accounts.
Same thing, another enterprise account, and their budget, although it comes from sewer user fees, still has to be appropriated by town meeting annually.
Article 17 is the Deferred Maintenance Sewer Department.
Sewer Department, we went through a period of time where their funds weren't certified, just like the town didn't have certified free cash, and they had deferred a number of maintenance items from their budget, that now accumulates about $70,000. I honestly don't recall the exact breakdown, it is available on the website for anyone that's interested in it, and that would be paid for with their retained earnings.
And Article 18, would if it's passed, establish a stabilization fund with the sewer?
Yes, the Sewer Department will have capital needs in the future, the gardener expansion of their wastewater treatment plant, a portion of that we need to pay. The Sewer Department is under pressure from the Department of Environmental Protection on what we call inflow and infiltration, are we getting clean storm water, sump pump water, other kinds of things into the system that is needlessly being treated. DEP's very strong on getting all this removed, so they may have some capital needs. And so the thought is, just as the town has these stabilization funds to try to plan for future events, we should do that with the Sewer Department as well.
And that requires a two-thirds vote, and does that also require a vote to use funds out of there?
It does, so it requires a two-thirds vote to create the fund. It's a simple majority vote to put money in, but it is a two-thirds vote to take money out.
I see. Article 19, our deposits to reserve accounts of the sewer fund.
Well, once, once we've established the fund, we this year do have some money to start to put into it, and I think we're looking at the capital expense, that stabilization, of around $100,000. And we're also looking this year to start to make progress on the Sewer Department's OPEB, those are those other post-employment benefit expenses, health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance. The Light and Water Department has started to set money aside for these, the town has been setting aside a modest amount, and this year, we would start the sewer fund to do that, so that all departments, the general fund, light and water, and sewer are making some contribution towards this. And while the town has perhaps not been able to make the kind of progress that we'd hoped for, making progress across the board will help raise our credit rating over time.
Okay, Article 20, set the salaries of some elected town officials.
That is statute, and what the town had been doing previously, they're saying, well, their budgets are in, their salaries are in the budget, town meeting approved the budget, therefore, town meeting approved what we were going to pay these elected officials. I suppose there's an argument to be made for that, I've not thought that was as transparent as it should be, and therefore, last year, we started calling these out separately and independently. At this time, there's only two classes of paid elected town officials, there's the town clerk, all other department heads are appointed, and there's the sewer commissioners. All other boards and commissions on the town side of the house serve without compensation, but the sewer commissioners are paid something annually.
Now, Article 21 is a biggie, that's the town budget for fiscal year '19, which starts in July, right? And this is what, you've just cut through your whole budget season and many pages of budgets.
It was a long one, there's many pages of budgets for those who are really data-driven, really like to see all the detail, those are all online, go onto the town's website, templeton1.org, and you can find that town meeting page, and you'll see the entire budget broken down, item by item by item. This is about $8,200,000, it does also contain all of the debt, health insurance for all of the utility funds as well, and then we get compensated by them.
Now, does this also include what would be voted on with the ballot questions for the tax overrides for ambulance and police?
No, those are kept as separate votes. We need to walk out of the town meeting with a budget for fiscal '19, so that all of the baseline services can continue, and then, maybe the very next... And then, maybe the very next article, we'll see that the ballot questions are handled as supplemental freestanding warrant articles.
Well, not quite. Funding of AFL-CIO.
Yes, and you're right, they don't follow an exact order because once there's monies appropriated for the town budget, we did reach two collective bargaining agreements this year. So Articles twenty-two and twenty-three are to fund those. So the collective bargaining agreement with the dispatch, with the police did not actually require any additional money because after everything was done, at the last minute, we had a police officer or two resign. So they were at the top of the scale. The new ones that we brought in were at the entry level of the scale. So we had enough money internally within the budget to fund these. Now, some would say, well, you adopted the budget and there was money in the budget, and therefore, you don't need to bring these to town meeting for funding. Again, I don't believe that that is the kind of transparency we should have with the community. So we put it as a warrant article and the terms and conditions are that are basically a 2% pay raise for these employees for one year. In return, all new employees have to go on direct deposit. We have the ability in the future to move to paperless electronic statements. And anybody that signs up for the higher price health insurance plan, instead of us contributing 75, 25, which we've been doing, we will only have to contribute what we would contribute to the lower HMO plan. So across the community, all the entities, the general fund, sewer, Light and Water, if this can be spread across the organization, there's a $24,000 savings plus or minus to be made. So we gave not unreasonable raises and I think got some good management rights back in return. And this is for one year. We will have to negotiate a three-year agreement in the future.
I see. Article twenty-four, I think that's to the ambulance issue.
It does. This was originally envisioned as an override of roughly $375,000. It was essentially to support the ambulance service. The costs of running the ambulance, unfortunately, particularly at this new higher ALS level, far outstripped the revenues. The revenues simply don't and can't keep pace. And so in order to provide ambulance, we need the revenues plus these tax dollars to backfill it. Now, unfortunately, partway through the process, you know, you talk about the operating budget. Well, we had a little around $240,000 in new revenues for the whole town. The school district alone requested $485,000. Twice what we had. So when all was said and done, we did get the school district down about $130,000, $140,000, but we needed to increase this override a little bit. It is still all public safety, so it's the ambulance, which is about $375,000. And there's an added roughly $100,000 for police, snow and ice, some things like that. So it's now a 75 cent override, which for someone with a $200,000 house would be about a $150 increase in their tax bill. And I've left to the chief, you know, describing the ambulance, the response time. And, and there is no, the important thing is there is no Plan B. We're not going to continue to provide the ambulance after July one and then hope that there's a second override. This service will cease on June 30, 2018, if we cannot get the additional funding to sustain it.
So just for people's information too, those are some of the signs you see riding around town on, on the roads, asking you to vote a certain way on this. And this is also, again, on the town election ballot on May 7, and it has to pass both the town election and the town meeting in order to be funded, correct?
Correct, right. And it's contingent. So this warrant article is contingent upon the passage of that ballot question. If the ballot question does not pass, then the warrant article will have to be passed over.
I see. And Article twenty-five is for extraordinary inspection workload.
This is similar to last fall. We have the new school and our staffing was never designed to handle large commercial and industrial projects like this. We have a part-time building inspector, part-time gas, part-time plumbing. And the building inspector is paid about $32,000 a year for 20 hours of work. He comes in two nights a week. He does some stuff on Saturdays and on vacation days and things like that. So what we did last year in the fall was we set aside some additional money to pay them for their extraordinary additional work. It's just way out of the norm. And we are getting, being paid by the project for the building permit. But that money, all lands in fiscal eighteen. So there's inspections that continue, a little bit in fiscal eighteen. The building's concrete's being poured now, fiscal nineteen, when the bulk of the work will happen, and then fiscal twenty. So this is the second of the three tranches of appropriations that we spoke of last fall.
And obviously, a lot more inspections happened with the new building, especially a school building.
Much, much more of the plans are, you know, yay, big around. Just the simple task of reviewing the plans for compliance with codes was substantial by itself.
Article twenty-six has been talked about a little bit in town. It's the adoption of a local marijuana tax.
As part of the statute that creates the ability under state law for people to raise, process and distribute, and then sell at the retail level marijuana products. The state provided a mechanism by which communities could adopt a tax of up to 3% on the retail side of that system. We don't know that it's only going to be retail because the state hasn't issued all of its regulations just yet. We don't know that anyone's going to open a retail shop here in town. But should they, we've asked the town to adopt this 3% tax. Now, it's important to note that we don't actually have to collect the tax and keep track of it and do all that. The way this works is they're going to be paying the state a tax. So they simply add the local tax to that. They send all that to Boston. At the Department of Revenue, they say, oh, we got X numbers of dollars from Templeton retail shops. We see Templeton adopted the 3% tax. Here's what Templeton share would be. And quarterly, they will send us a report and I used to say check, but now it's an electronic transfer. So there's no administrative overhead to us in doing this.
And Article twenty-seven is, regards the adoption of a local meals tax, which I know you've considered to raise some money.
We've, this is a tax that's been around for close to 15 years now. Municipalities may adopt a 0.75% tax on top of the 6.25% meals tax. And so that, that, you know, 99 cent coffee, which was a dollar five, becomes a dollar six. And we've got quite a few examples on the web. There's flyers on the counters and throughout the community explaining this. It is anticipated to raise about $42,000 a year. There is no collection overhead for us. The local retailer resets their registers, their point of sale system, and instead of saying 6.25% tax on taxable items, it's changed to be 7%. They send all the tax they collect to the Department of Revenue, same as the marijuana tax. DOR says, this establishment in Templeton paid us X, Templeton adopted the meals tax, Templeton share is Y, and every quarter, they send us a report and they make an electronic transfer.
So even if I order a pizza and have it delivered, it's a.
Yes. So let's say, let's say that you've been ordering a $15 pizza and paying roughly 92 cents on that. That is going to go up to roughly a dollar four, something, something on that order. I'm doing the math fairly quickly. But it is $42,000 across the community, some of which is paid by folks from out of town as they work here, or they come to a meeting here, where they're driving through, you know, along 20268 and the like.
Article twenty-eight is to authorize lease of capital items for the police and the Department of Public Works, and that's contingent upon the adoption of this local meals tax, correct?
It is, it is. We have some substantial needs. The average age of the equipment in the DPW fleet is close to 17 years. We have some charts that show you the mileage and condition of our various police cruisers. And I think that most folks have recognized the need to improve the capital fleet on a regular basis. We also had a lot of people saying, well, what are you going to do with that meals tax money? You're just going to spend it. Well, yes, we're just going to spend it, but we're not looking to supplement the operating budget. We believe that it can provide, be a important resource to support a very needed capital program. And we wanted to show people that directly. That's how that was used. So that's why the meals tax first, then how we're going to spend it, all tied to capital items in the police and DPW. This will provide enough money with a little bit of some cash to pay a lease on a cruiser and a one-ton pickup, fully equipped, plow and wing and everything else for three years. And, you know, that's our intent going forward is that at the end of the three years, there would be a a similar warrant article to lease the next one ton. We need four. We're hoping we can get 12 years out of them, so you can see four times three years is that 12 years. And this can help provide a bit of a backbone. It doesn't solve our problems. Now, some people have said, well, can it be changed? Yeah. In three years, a different select board could propose something different, or even town meeting. Because remember, these are proposals to town meeting. The town meeting could say, nope, we would rather that money was used to do this instead. And so, Board of Selectmen, we understand you, but we're going to do this. So this is a $42,000 source of money without increasing the real estate tax, partially paid for by commuting employees, passerby's, committed to the capital program with the intent of it being that going forward, it would stay committed to the capital program. And we had, we did three public hearings on this. The first one, we invited just the merchants, food vendors, if you will. And I, I think they understood. I didn't have any opposition, no fears of losing business, no pushback and that. The only, they recognized the need to support the capital program. Their only concern was, okay, you're selling us this on this basis, is that going to change in the future? And I'll tell you, it's certainly not our intent that that would change in the future.
And there were some good questions and comments on those, and those videos are available on TCTV's YouTube page and Channel Eight. If you check the schedule, that's still running, so that you can be informed of your decision at town meeting on the meals tax. So Article twenty-nine is authorized lease of capital items for the fire department.
Fire department, certainly the price tag of their equipment is high. A typical fire truck is in the, today, is in the $450,000 and up range. We have six frontline pieces of apparatus with the oldest one now being 31 years. Most departments will tell you the NFP standards, it was 25 years. I think they pushed it down to 20. We're at 31, and when you order a piece of equipment like this, it's often 10 months to a year to actually get it. So we had a bit of good fortune in terms of the capital program this year. In fiscal eighteen, we make the last payment on the town's bond issue for 252 Baldwin. So we had a choice. Do we use the 92.5, $92,500 just to support the operating budget? We could do that. Or are we going to recognize how badly we need to address our capital program and the rolling stock, what I call the rolling stock? And the decision by the select board, and I'm hoping this will be supported by the community, is that, well, we were paying that on debt, we're paying that on capital, so we're going to keep that money on the capital side of the ledger. That 92.5, along with a little bit of some free cash, will allow us to replace this 31-year-old fire engine. It's a six-year lease. We have six pieces of equipment. Six times six is 36 years. So we have a long ways to go to get that down to where we are replacing one every five years. But it's a start and it is a desperately needed piece of equipment in, in my mind. This one will require a two-thirds vote. And even though it has a so-called escape clause in it, that is, if the town doesn't appropriate the money, we can send the fire truck back. A little bit larger turnback than, let's say, one of our cars. The Department of Revenue believes it's, it's similar to a long-term debt, so it does require a two-thirds vote. For anyone that has some real questions, I'm sure that Chief Dickey would be able to speak to them at much greater length.
Article thirty is a capital budget, and it includes some things like an infield groomer, some cemetery roof and fire training room. And what's an F-150 interceptor? It sounds like something the Air Force would run.
It does, doesn't it? So we've kept, we have some additional capital items and we're being assisted on our capital budget with a contributions to these items by the municipal Light and Water Department, for which we thank them. But for instance, right now, the infield on the softball fields is raked by hand.
This is at Gilman Way.
At Gilman Way. We're only getting it done once a week. It takes a substantial amount of time for the fellas to go out there and do that. I can't remember the, the numbers exactly, but by purchasing a piece of equipment that's actually designed for this, and the total price tag's around 15,000, apart from us, apart from Templeton Light and Water Department, we're going to be able to groom that infield twice a week instead of one and still put several hundred hours of staff time back onto the schedule. Time that's desperately needed because we are so understaffed for our cemeteries and all of our other ball fields and, and the like. The garage roof at the cemetery up on Bridge Street is close to failure and I think we all know from. And I think we all know from taking care of our homes that if you can change that roof out before the water starts to actually get through it, you can avoid a substantial amount of damage, which then is much more costly. The F-150 interceptor, right now, the chief of the fire department drives a Ford. I don't know whether it's an Explorer or an Expedition. It's at the end of its life. We're not even sure it's going to. It may make it through inspection with a little bit of investment. It's really at the end of its life. And also, the department needs a utility vehicle so that at fire scenes and such right now, they're rolling up all the hose and some of the guys are actually putting it in their own pickups that they happen to be there or their trunks or whatever. So the plan is to have the new chief's vehicle be this. It's called an interceptor because it's on a police chassis. It's on a police public safety. So we have those Ford interceptor patrol cars. We have the SUV interceptor police vehicles. And there's going to be, we hope in time, the F-150 interceptor will be issued. It's an F-150 pickup truck with the public safety package. Heavier springs, brakes, all those things that our public safety professionals need during the course of theirs. So the chief will use that for five years. And then, hoping we can get another five years, it'll go into service as the utility vehicle for the department at the end of the ten. We'll rotate. So the idea is to try to get all of these rolling stock items onto a schedule. And then sort out a manner in which we can sustain the funding of that schedule so that they're being replaced according to plan. Not at the last minute when they fail. And we are really struggling to figure out how we get through a winter because the truck has failed. Or how we get through the next year because a fire truck has gone down or is facing a substantial repair cost.
And this coincides with the effort to get a five-year capital plan in place.
Absolutely.
For all departments in town as well.
Not just a plan, but a plan that we can sustain.
And Article thirty-one is another capital budget for, and this has a couple of different items in.
It's some, so some increased in additional improvements to the Gilman Way Athletic Field. And there's some monies coming out of the Pejori stabilization fund. There's about ninety-three hundred dollars left in that. The school department will actually be sharing in this with an additional ten thousand or so. And then there's a donation account at the rec. So the total project is about thirty thousand, of which we're using ten thousand of town monies for. There will be an amendment to this one that I missed quite frankly when we drafted it. Because when this withdrawal is made, there will be zero dollars left in the fund. And no intent to make additional contributions. So there will be an amended motion to discontinue the fund once it's been reduced to zero.
I see. And Article thirty-two regards the police station.
The town authorized approximately a million dollars. That was a couple of years ago. Unfortunately, with the delays in getting it out to bid, the price increased dramatically. I saw the hanger over at the Gardner Airport that was estimated around five hundred thousand. They got one bid for a million and a quarter. Well, we got one bid for two point two, two point three million dollars. And certainly it's back out to bid now. But we are in need of supplemental funding. This will add a four thousand dollar expansion and then renovate the original two thousand. Building's in pretty tough shape and the needs of the department are great.
I know the police department has invited people to stop by and take a quick tour if you, if you want to take a look at the police station.
Just, just give the, the station a call, ask for Chief Bennett, and he'll arrange to give you that one-on-one.
And Article thirty-three is the Narragansett Regional School District budget.
It is, and it is what it is. They did come down a touch. And all parties are agreed to support that budget at this point in time.
Article thirty-four is the Monty Tech budget, which is on every year as well.
That's on every year as well. And again, that actually had a substantial reduction last year. Had a substantial pop-up this year. Because it's not just that their budget changes, but there can be some really wide swings in the number of students that are sent, which then impacts the sharing formulas. So part of our increase at Narragansett Regional, in fairness to our partners in Phillipsville, we did have a slight shift to us by about one percentage point of the student population. So I think we're now about eighty-four percent of the student population instead of eighty-five. That one percent shift, believe it or not, was about thirty thousand dollars. So the Monty, it's a budget, it's about six eighty-five this year, I believe, six ninety as I'm looking at it. And this, this also is one that is an annual item.
The other articles on the town meeting warrant regard citizens petitions. And you're welcome to go online and view the entire warrant and check out some of those as well.
There's five this year. I will leave to the petitioners to make the merits of their case. I will leave to others to make the dumb merits of their case. But there are five. And as you said, the entire warrant is on the town's website at this point in time.
And just another reminder, we were just talking about the police station. That too is a ballot question on the, on the May seventh town election ballot.
It is. And I've had some questions about why doesn't it have a number in it? Well, a debt exclusion is different than an override. An override is a very specific number. Four hundred and seventy thousand and some change. Well, the debt exclusion, you are excluding only the amount required to pay the debt service. And that debt service number is never known until you actually float the bond and are about to sign off. Because it's possible that the number of years you're going to do the debt for can change. In our case, it's a fairly short term. You never know the interest rate until the final day, when you get those bids opened and you sign the bond. And then unlike at home where we get even payments of principal interest on our house or on our car, most communities, what we call even principal. So if you have a million-dollar bond and it's going to be for twenty years, you're paying fifty thousand dollars of principal every single year. Well, the interest goes down every single year and it changes every single year. So between needing to wait till you lock in the exact number of years you're going to do it, not knowing the exact interest rate that you're going to get, not always knowing ahead of time whether you're going to use even amortization or even principal, that number changes. And so that's why ballot questions exclude the amount to pay the bond and do not have fixed amounts.
So a lot of this information is available on our website, templetonone.org.
It's all available on the website. We've been trying to do direct links. Templeton Community Television taped all of the budget workshops, the advisory committee and the selectmen sat together. I, I believe I attended eleven this year. Taped the school departments, most of their hearings, taped the public hearing in which we invited the public to come in and say, please explain this override. Did you think about this? Did you think about that? Did you think about that? And that was very well attended. I think fifty plus, one of the better attended meetings. So those are available on, and also I tend to be here Monday through Wednesday, ten AM to four PM. Just feel free to walk in. I'll do my best. If I have a scheduled meeting, to at least spend a little bit of time with you. Send me an email, townadministrator@templetonone.org. Give us a call. Whatever we can do to answer your questions and get you the information. And if it's a question we haven't gotten yet, we will get that out to not only you, but to the public at large as well.
So remember again, Monday, May seventh, town election from eleven AM to seven PM at the Narragansett Middle School Gym, I believe. And there are both office, town officers being elected on that and two ballot questions regarding the ambulance service funding and the police station funding that would have to pass to go to town meeting on May nineteenth.
That's correct.
Saturday, starting at nine AM at the middle school auditorium. And get out there and vote.
And thank you for listening to us. And thank you for putting me through the hoops to do my best to explain to people what these are all about.
Well, thank you for explaining it to us.
Have a good day, everyone.